Go ahead.
Good.
Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting at four thirty. We're gonna stand for the pledge. And Tim's gonna lead us off, 'cause he loves to do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then we're gonna have a motion go. It says public comment, but we need to go into, um, non-public, 'cause we have appointments. So can we have a motion to move public comment down after? After resume meeting? Okay, motion.
I need a motion.
And a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're gonna have a motion now to go into non-public. Oh, personnel's here too. So we'll put, when we sat down.
Well, I think that's, yeah, that's what we do.
Yeah. Do we need a motion to go into non-public?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public at four thirty-two. Or say, oh, no.
Alright, second's Kelly.
All in favor? Oh, Roque.
Kelly Huma.
Maria Brown. And Hubbard.
Lacy Fowlett.
Okay. Excellent. And we can bring, um, are we ready for the first, first amendment?
Yes.
Mrs. Small. Okay, Lacy.
Alright, I make a nomination to...
Nope, oh, you wanna make a motion.
Oh, motion, I'm sorry, come on out of the...
Not that public, that's right.
Um, I make a motion to come out of non-public.
Second. Okay, all in favor? And a motion to go into non-meeting with legal.
Are we making a motion to accept a nomination first?
Yeah, after the non-meeting, then we'll go back and go regular meeting.
Okay.
So non-meeting with legal. Motion to go into non-meeting?
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Second. Jen? Um, Kelly, did you make the second? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The nomination I'm going first, yeah.
Okay, so you need a motion to come out of non-public meeting?
Motion to come out of non-public. Hold second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At seven eleven P.M. Yep.
And Maria, is open public comment?
Yeah, open public comment, um, at seven eleven. And we have anybody here speak on topic comment? Seeing none, we'll leave it open for the thirty minutes required, till, um, twenty of them. If everybody can keep track of it all. Um, and then we'll continue on, uh, with the next thing on the agenda, which is the...
Yes, so I would, um, like to, um, accept Meredith's nomination, or recommendation for the nomination of Ms. Colleen West for the assistant principal position in our elementary school. I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then to move on to add to the agenda, if we could, um, the PE program structure proposal. Should we vote to add that to the agenda, or?
You can just add it to the agenda, and then, um, yeah.
Okay.
So it actually, it's probably, it's probably preferable, I just...
Okay.
Yeah.
So to add discussion for the PE program, um, presented by, um, Matt, asking us to review this, this evening?
Can I make a motion to add it to the agenda?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
So, it says basically that we would remove a special education teacher who's already resigned, so we wouldn't have to let anybody go. We would utilize, uh, that salary towards New England Center for Children All-Inclusive Program.
Correct.
What, um, services do they provide?
So they would be providing similar services to what we, we currently have, but it's more specialized, so they would be doing both, um, a, um, teacher, um, direct instruction, as well as BCPA services.
Okay.
So, um, but it's a tailored, um, program where they can address, um, some of these needs for, for our student population that, um, that are either autistic or have, um, others, other needs, behavioral needs. Um, whereas we, we don't feel that we can do that in-house. Um, essentially, we would be, we'd be hiring a new teacher that would, we'd be moving someone into the PE program, but, um, none of our existing teachers have that expertise that would be able to, that, um, NEC does.
So NEC would basically be third party that would come in every day of the week, or?
Yep, so it'd be, it'd be five days a week, it's a contracted service provider. Um, their cost is two hundred and ten thousand dollars, um, for the year. So that's for the teacher and the, um, BCPA services, um, and their programming. Um, and we'd be, we'd also, we'd also be utilizing our existing RBTs and EAs in that program. Um, and there would be some required training, so there's an additional of four thousand dollars, um, cost there. Um, and then we wouldn't, we would not hire the teachers, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then we have about ninety-five thousand dollars available for BCPA services, um, for contracted services that we've utilized for that program.
Now, is that the same BCPA services that we removed from the budget, um, months ago to, for, because of our default?
Yes, so we either, in our budget, we had a BCPA on the, on payroll. Um, however, we reduced that position and then added contracted services, BCPA. So it's essentially...
So why haven't we just?
Thank you.
Why didn't we just, you just said that we don't have anybody that can provide those services, but we did have somebody to provide those services when we cut it?
We didn't have a person, in the budget, we were adding a BCPA, and then during the default budget process, we reduced the person and added contracted services. Might go towards contracted services.
For that position.
But we didn't get, we didn't get no one on, like, hired.
I feel like that we could hire a BCPA without having to bring another...
Third party.
Third party in, because this is actually for students three years old to twenty-two.
This is specialized services, though, for, uh, pieces...
Actually, the, the, the bigger cost is the teacher cost, the BCPA cost is only a, it's, it's probably about twenty percent of the BCPA. So if we were gonna hire anyone, it would be a special education teacher, and then we'd contract out the BCPA.
So I think the reason I'm struggling with this is because during budget time, we were told that we needed a BCA, we needed a BCPA, and then when it came time to cut the budget, that wasn't given to us in the proposal until we wanted to cut other things. But then the BCA BA was an option that we would no longer need, because we'd only need them part-time. But now, all of a sudden, we need a full-time BCPA again.
Well, no, this isn't a full-time BCPA, like I said, it's a, it's gonna be a full-time teacher, and the BCPA is probably about twenty percent of this group. The, um, the BCPA that we had approved, that we had in our budget, was, was gonna, um, offer not just services in special education, but also, um, interventions for as far as in general education. So when we went to default budget, we reduced the general portion of the BCPA. So that, that's not a full person, and just the requirements that we can get in peace. So that's, that's why we were able to reduce the BCPA to contracted services. There's still ninety-five thousand dollars, as opposed to, um, hiring someone.
So would this, um, but it's for a full, a full year. So would this, um, this is obviously specialized program for these children that have special, very specialized needs, and this, this would prevent us from having to outsource or even send them out?
Correct.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, it's two people, it's not, it's not one BCPA, it's a teacher and a BCPA.
Why would we need to include the New England Center for Children, why don't we?
Because it's their staff.
Why don't we just hire our own staff?
Because we don't, we don't have the, the, the staff that can...
Well, we could post the position. I mean, I know somebody who works in this school, who's applying in other schools, and she just, she's got her master's degree, and she's going to Northampton.
So it's, it's, there's two positions, right? So the BCPA is only a portion of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, it's a very specialized, um, skills for this, for this program, and we're not confident that we can find anyone that could fill this position, particularly at this time of the year, where it's, we're really waiting game.
The, the student population is our highest need population, um, and that's, I get a lot of calls to go support that program, and I think by having the right staff running it, it would certainly give us a better opportunity to keep our kids here, um, if we give them that education they deserve, without potentially...
So, so question then, Tim, is this. If we have this program and we have severe, um, disabilities, and the parents don't believe that that program is good for their kids, they could still fight and take their kids elsewhere, and you're still gonna pay that hundred and sixty thousand, 'cause I've seen it happen, um, under other leadership. If somebody can tell me, no, that cannot happen, once we bring that on, they have no choice but to use that program, whether they want to or not, and they cannot say, we wanna go to, um, Conway, or we want our student to go to Northampton, they can't do that. They have to stay in that program. Can someone tell me that, Conway?
Well, it's an IP team decision, so they, certainly, if the IP team felt that it was in the best interest to not be in this program, go out of district, that it, that's always a possibility. However, this is a cost neutral, it's actually a savings of about just under five thousand dollars for this program. The hundred and sixty thousand dollars that, that family has, if they want their, their, their student to stay here, and if, the problem is, we just don't have the program for that student. So this solves that problem. If we don't implement this program, the student's definitely going out of this room. So, um, it's, it's really...
But this wasn't created specifically for that student, correct?
No, it's, this is, this is kind of how we envisioned the PE program in a perfect world originally. Um, it's just, we just haven't had the, the right staff to make it successful.
So to piggyback on, um, Maria's theory, do they offer enough wide-range services to be all-inclusive with our, with our students, so that our students are getting the most, um, the most education? Or their, their specific, i- individualized education? Do we know that?
Well, this, this is a, this is a...
I haven't researched this company, or this kind of...
I'm looking at that.
Yeah, so, so NEC has a lot of experience in, like, these programs in schools, um, with a, a very high success rate. Um, now, it's, it is...
Right, stuff happens.
A limited number of students, like, they can, they can only serve as, it's under ten students total. Um, so conceivably, there could be, if we have more move-ins, like, there might be students that they aren't able to serve as, and, um, but, we do hope that this, this will immediately save us costs, but then it'll, it'll save us or mitigate the risk of future out-of-district placements.
And the good thing is, kids get to stay in the schools that they wanna stay in, rather than all, you know, a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar placement.
So what is the, um, the... 'Cause we're not mentioning a name. What is the age of this particular student?
I mean, it's elementary.
We're talking first grade, second grade?
I honestly don't know.
So, I mean, I'm looking through it, and it was, um, there's a, they, so does that mean we'd be using a different? 'Cause it says that they have their own curriculum. Obviously, they're like, we couldn't specialize. But then it also said that it was, I have to see it.
It's services for children and adults in the Middle East. I need to see it.
Yeah, I mean, and they have different programming, so, and this is specific to this program.
Well, it's from another country, I don't know. Ah, Houdja Habbi.
I just don't know what, once we commit to a group, I...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I need more information, I can't just make a decision like this, I mean, because we're also on a default budget.
This actually saves us money. Like, this is, this is five thousand dollars less than...
It is saving us money, but there's not the caveat guarantee, like, I wish you could tell me that we're gonna bring this program on, so there'll be no more outsourcing anybody, and they'll be able to stay here in house, and it'll continue to be a savings.
We'll never be able to promise that.
They can, and that's what I worry, what if we have two students come up and the parents say, we don't wanna deal with this particular count, uh, group? And, and we know parents have rights, right, with disability, they have rights too, to be able to speak up what's best for their child, and decide they want to bring them out for whatever reason. We have nothing that could say no, so we could give this group two hundred and ten thousand, and then, in the beginning of school, find out that we have two more kids that are in the same predicament, but we can't say, you have to go in that program, so on staff.
We're gonna be in that situation no matter what, I mean, that's...
Now, the program, obviously, these people coming in are special education teachers.
Yep.
So, if we're, it's, are we paying for our own, I mean, I know we don't like to get rid of teachers, but are we paying for our own teacher, that's just one teacher? Or are we paying for, that just says one set of skills? Or are we gonna pay for an all-inclusive program that might have several different teachers with different sets of skills? And saving a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for, uh, out-of placement? And I know, I know where you're getting from, 'cause it's like, you don't want to implement this, save the one sixty, and then have to pay three twenty down the road.
And we might have to, but that's the chance.
We also have to need a special education teacher. So how can we say we couldn't find somebody with the same? It doesn't sound like we're looking for a teacher or BCPA, it's like we're looking for a whole different program. And that's what concerns me, because we know nothing about this.
So do we wanna table this for our fist? I mean, but that's...
That's gonna be too late.
I know, I know.
Well, you're bringing it to us today, I mean, how long have we known about this student?
Well, we, we, we tried to bring it on the agenda for today, so we just found out because we, we just got the resignation. So this is an opportunity that arose when we just got the resignation from the special education teacher. We're looking, we're trying to be, come up with a solution to a, a large financial pro- problem, and, um, and our special education, you know, professionals came to this with, uh, to us with, with this as a solution. Our, our principals have all vetted it, they're comfortable with it. Um, it's a very well-known, established organization, um, that's proven to be successful with these type of programs. So it's, it's much like, uh, some of our other contracted services that we provide, you know, whether it's first tree, like, speech, or OT, or our different services. So it's, it's, you know, in a, typically, we would just be implementing this, but we want to bring it to you, because obviously, this, this involves personnel, it involves a large expense. Um, it's, it's something that we want the board to, to see and, and understand, but, um, it's pretty...
It's a lot of money. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
What's over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for one child?
And, and it doesn't, and it...
Jen, that, you're, you're a hundred percent right, but we also were told that during budget season, and look what we just paid for Patricia Stone for the last year, when we approved the other BCPA and the other services, yet we're still paying her.
But she's contracted, right? She's contracted.
She's also, she, they pay for her to come in on top of what we already hired people for. So basically, she's the person that comes in and fills in. When we're short services, although...
Because we don't have enough staff.
Because, right, but we were told that if we approved the other BCPA and that staff, we'd have enough. But now she still comes in, and we had, I mean, this is a different conversation, but we also had Carrie still here, and she was coming in doing Carrie stuff. So I feel like no matter what we approve, there's always gonna be, okay, well, we have to bring them in, because we don't have enough money. So if we agree to this, how long is this contract?
So this is one year, so if this doesn't work, we can terminate the contract, and then we can just hire a teacher for next year.
Okay, so it's one year, and there's, and there's nothing in the contract saying we have to keep those two people?
And we will, and we will not renew the contract without your approval. So if it doesn't work, then, then you know what? We can part ways, and we can, we can go a different route.
And that's the same for those, the teeth, the staff involved?
Yeah, 'cause they were, they, they worked for NEC.
So I'm just asking, because I wanna make sure I got what I'm...
So we're not hiring them, the staff work for NEC, that's the cost.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a, it's a staff thing. Uh, but we're not, we're not obliged to keep them.
Right.
We, we would sign a contract for this year, and then, you know, hopefully it works, and we do keep it for next, for the following year, but, um, but if not, then we, we can certainly, you know, terminate it.
'Cause we've had somebody work in the PE program this whole time, who just, who's, just became certified. The PE, I'm not gonna, I mean, yeah.
Well, it's not...
Why can't you say her name, because we're non-public, it's Matt.
No, we don't.
It's not, it's a, it's a different, it's a different role, it's not, um, than, than anyone that's currently there, so...
What's the difference, do you know?
There's, so, so I'm, I won't pretend like I'm a, an expert in special education, but from what I'm told, is that this teacher specializes in certain, in structural methods and services that we don't currently have, um, in, on, onsite, so... And then, and then there's a, there's only another individual that'll come in to, to provide BCPA services in conjunction, and they'll be training our RBTs and EAs to, to assist them.
So the students are already in school?
So those, those staff members are already in, they're not...
Yeah, no, the student, the student is already in the school.
Students are in the school, yes, so, um...
So it would actually be a savings of a hundred and sixty-four thousand seventy-seven two dollars? Because if not, but that was for one child, right? So this will, can also serve more children than just one.
Right, so what about the other one we just paid for?
So mitigate its risk for other students, potentially.
Yeah.
So what about the one we just approved?
That's different, that, that individual is, can't be, that's a different need.
Situation.
So can't be serviced in this program.
I think we should give it a shot for a year.
We'll do it for a year, I mean, it's a year.
Is there any measurable goals that we can have, I mean, obviously, just to...
I didn't keep that one student here, I think that's one...
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I guess...
But, I know, I get what you're saying.
But we can, we can ask, um, we can ask, um, put together some goals, um...
And this is only for Seabrook residents, obviously, we're not bringing in other students, 'cause we have this...
Just Seabrook.
Okay.
So...
And we have the need, like, we, we're confident that this will be, this program will be... If, the only problem we're gonna have is, we may have more students than what we're gonna accomplish.
So I guess the other question I wanna ask, and I'm trying to say this softly, is, so this, I guess my concern is, is bringing in the, this program not necessarily an issue with this one student, obviously, but I'm just afraid that bringing in all these extra, extra services are gonna bring in students that maybe would not, um, it would not be in their best interest to be in a classroom setting for themselves and other students.
They can, other students can come from other districts to, to wanna come here with that program, yeah, right?
Or to move into town?
No.
They move.
No, if they have a hardship, and we have something we can offer them, they can come from another town, just like we can go to another district.
It doesn't have to be a year-long term. We'd have to approve that.
Yeah. Okay.
So that'd be, that'd be a discretion.
Yeah, I just, I don't...
But, but under normal circumstances, we can't, like, we can't be like, there's someone in town who falls, like, we'll use this, and we'll bring them over.
Okay.
It would have to be through, like, a manifest hardship, where you'd approve it, and...
I'll have a superintendent.
I mean, as long as this isn't opening the doors to students and coming in, that, that would really struggle with being in a classroom setting, because we offer the program.
It's very limited, it's very specific, and we've already, I know Tim's works with the special education department, that identify students that they're targeting in this program.
So it's not extremely hard behaviors that, that would struggle in a classroom?
No, I would describe it more as students, um, like, autism spectrum disorder that might be non-verbal.
That's specialized needs.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
So I feel comfortable to make a motion to accept, um, this new PE program or structural proposal.
I'll second. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
Yes, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jen, did you second that? Thank you, huh. Okay. Um... We have a few more minutes, 'cause we have to stay open for, um, public comment for thirty minutes, right?
Yes.
So we got a few more minutes to go.
So just, um, put a bug in your ear, Meredith asked me to, um, just remind you that we have the SaaS MOU that will need to be reviewed by the board and approved, as well as, I think I meant that hardship, so she was, she's hoping that we'll be able to schedule meeting for next week, um, before the end of the year.
Since we have a couple minutes, can we discuss the SaaS MOU?
Yeah, let's do it.
Well, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
You believe, you would add it...
Can we add it to the agenda and discuss it? I make a motion to add the SaaS MOU to the agenda.
Okay. I'll second.
Um, favor?
Aye.
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 So, um, I wasn't able to be here, I had strep throat, so, um, which is way worse than I thought, by the way.
Yeah.
But, um, oh, like, way worse. So, I know it was discussed briefly, and I didn't, 'cause I wasn't here, I wasn't privy to non-public, but I just, when I reviewed, I asked, I, I don't know if I asked you or Matt or Rhonda to put last year's MOU with SaaS, to compare the two, to make sure that we weren't, you know, giving new services, or...
They're the same.
The same exact services?
Yeah.
Okay, so what was the discussion with?
So, I'm looking for it, Lacy, sorry.
No, it's okay.
But, um, but instead of me speaking particularly about SaaS, 'cause I believe SaaS is SaaS, I'm particularly looking at nonprofits, like, say, the Girls and Boys Club or YMCA that we used to have, they come in and used our building, they solely used the cafeteria with tables pulled out for classroom, the other half for gym functions on the days they couldn't be outside. We didn't have those people actually utilizing our classrooms, teachers' rooms, the whole entire school. We didn't have, um, requests for office staff, janitorial, we didn't have any of that, because they're, they're own entity, right? Nonprofits have their money to come in and offer services for after-school programs. So I, I'm looking at a bigger picture of how in-depth we go with nonprofits. Say, at the Boys and Girls Club comes back, um...
Right, how much are we willing to all on our end?
So I was hoping that moving forward, that we see MOUs that have, like, where required to provide storage space, where required to provide, provide janitorial. I was hoping to see less of the whole building used, so that the janitors have freed up those extra three hours a day too, for cleaning, and I said that before this even a bullthumber. And I look at nonprofits as a group to come in after school, and I, I really struggle with all those requests, that I've never seen the MOU, so I wouldn't know what, you know, I know what happened previously years ago, but I've never seen it so in-depth. So I worry about what we're doing on our end, um, and how much extra we're putting on our people, like, they, for instance, cafeteria gives a free meal. I, I know kids that, you know, would love a free meal, but they can't get it, for whatever reason, they fall beyond, we provide that, and that's kind of our in-kind thing.
So that is part of our in-kind, or is that part, does SaaS pay, like, the portion of the gap for the food?
Never.
You know, that's in-kind?
So without just SaaS, that to just nonprofits in general, we, we don't do that.
No, I, are we supposed to do in-kind, where, where it's not a grant, SaaS isn't a grant that we're supposed to be...
We don't have to do that, so...
Right, for them, but not for us, correct?
Right, but the grant that we accepted said that we would contribute.
Right, in-kind.
So I called, 'cause we've done cash for years. We've done money for years, and I called and spoke to, 'cause I like to really dig into things for everybody in fairness, and there was never, ever a time when they said we had to pay money. So all those years, we were paying all that money unnecessarily. They don't make any requirement, basically, it's a partnership, and whatever you can give, like your building, you let them use X amount of the building, it's in-kind. It doesn't require a specific amount of anything, so all those years paying, we all know, we learned after that, we, we probably shouldn't have been doing that, you know? And now I'm in a place where I think where it's been brought to us as a board, we look at all nonprofits, how much of our building is continually utilized, classrooms? And I also think it puts a lot of, um,... Classrooms and I also think it puts a lot of, um, pressure on the classroom itself, because there's things in there that probably everybody shouldn't see.
Right, so is there a way to kind of put parameters around the MOU when it says, oh, we're, you know, we can offer gym space and storage in classrooms? But the classroom is maybe the light, the elementary school library or something of that nature, so it's not free range, it's.
Yeah. To the whole.
To a couple of rooms that, you know, Tim kind of lays out ahead of time and says, hey, you know, we'd love to have you, but we can only keep you in the art room, the lib- like.
Of the cafeteria, with the table.
Is that something that we can restrict with that, if you feel uncomfortable with them having?
Yes.
So what I was, I was, yeah, so what I wanted to say was that I know, like, in the last couple of years, and there was a lot of emails that were sent, and I would just refer them to Brian. Um, about classrooms being destroyed and teachers' stuff being destroyed and stuff needs to be replaced, or their desks, or other kids' desks going into. Because kids, you know, kids are kids, and kids are good, and I think, um, you know, the staff is, the staff at SaaS is young, so they probably do the best they can, but I think that the concern is, is that. Um, I know that there was, there were several times, like, over a week's period, where the teacher would have to come in the next day and clean the room. So I think the class, and I think there were teachers that definitely, I don't think, I know there was, it was teachers that had voiced last year and even the beginning of this year, that they didn't want their classes being used and they had no say and.
So they couldn't stay after for extra help either.
I just don't think that's their space.
Okay.
Say you want, say, um, a teacher wanted to stay after for extra, extra help, if her, her, his classroom was utilized, they couldn't. So I think.
And there's no rhyme or reason why these classrooms or whose classrooms get you lost.
They try to rotate it so that you can use like the sixth grade pod, cuz I said you shouldn't always use the same space, seventh grade, because teachers do get annoyed, so, and we rotated it.
Right, okay. So is this something that you, I wanted to bring it up, cuz I wanted to, you know, get things done, but.
No, I think it's get things done. Yes, we should.
So we should get things done and if we feel that, okay, there's too much free range, maybe we can work with Tim and Colleen to be like, hey, do you guys have a? Better space for them to work at, or are there any teachers that would volunteer their space or something like that, so that we can put parameters in regards to that, if, if you guys are.
Yeah. Yeah.
So instead of, you know, saying no to the MOU, we say yes, but we have these conditions.
Right. Pieces, right, yeah. And I think it's a great program and we need after-school programs, but we've gotta, we've, we've gotta remember at the end of the day.
We feel comfortable with that.
A man.
That programs that have a very large, um, budget from grants is good, but how much during the day? Um, program or day utilization is necessary and kind of monitor a little bit better, and I think that will help everybody in the long run.
One thing I had asked Meredith about adding to the MOU, and it looks like it's in here highlighted in gray, um, but it's about replacing any damaged materials. Um, because I didn't see that in there and that's something that I felt strongly needed to happen, based on the same concerns I have.
Right. Okay.
In hearing, um, but I've also had ideas around, I don't think anyone would voluntarily give up their classrooms.
Right.
Do you just wanna be able to stay after and bring that?
Yeah.
Um, so one thought I had was, I don't know if it would really be possible, but somehow compensating the teachers, almost like, if they're gonna be giving up their time to. Clean up after SaaS and they come in the next morning or.
No, I think we need to hold SaaS accountable.
Yeah, right, no, I, I, I agree with you, I think there's.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, they do.
Right.
No, but it's just brainstorming some ideas.
Yeah, no, I definitely agree, but I think we're gonna get in the habit of compensating people, because, um, I think it's a great idea, I just think that. There, that SaaS needs to make sure that their staff is trained to keep an eye on these kids and also make sure.
Well, don't we have a lot of teachers that work, yeah, same school, we work for SaaS?
You do, yeah.
But I think a lot of it is their space.
And they're probably busy, people tutoring and things like that.
Yeah.
Well, we do, I guess more of us setting expectations of the condition of the world, that if they're losing privileges, and if they don't.
Yeah, they, we do.
Yes. Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
I'd be very reluctant to pay our teachers to clean up their mess, so that's not our responsibility.
Yeah, because they clean up the cafeteria the next day.
Right.
And they have replaced, cuz all of our bowls that were on our little metal woolen cage went missing, so I, I mean, I basically, that's them, so we have nothing to replace us and. Your kids, so, but I'm glad you put it in the writing.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, and I don't wanna be petty, but there was a lot of concerns, I guess, about the, you know, cuz lamination is a lot expensive and I guess there was a lot of lamination being done and copies and. You know, it is what it is, but I guess when, you know, you're on a default budget, you gotta kind of be careful about how many copies copies are doing.
So we, we get a monetary number, yeah, we get a monetary number on in-kind.
That's definitely in. We're on the same page, yeah.
What our in-kind services are, you know, if we're allowed to do twenty thousand dollars in-kind, okay, well, what does that look like? What does twenty thousand dollars of in-kind look like? How much, you know, space do you get, they, you know, for playground, the.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, think about what Lisa would cost around the daycare.
Well, but just the, yeah, I know, but like the space and the storage and everything that they're requesting in MO, in their MOU.
No, but I'm just saying.
If we can put a monetary value to that and be like, is, is that equal to the in-kind that we're trying to contribute, because obviously the program's great. Helps a lot of people that are in need of that program, but we also need to set boundaries with the program, it appears.
Yeah.
Because they do, the cap people do, um, prepare all the food for them too, which is really helpful, but it, it is manpower. And then, um, I think the, well, there's one more thing too, I think it was, um, I know there's a huge issue, and Colleen can probably, I don't know if you. There was an issue with gym time with SaaS after school, because the basketball uses the gym too.
Right.
We, we have scheduling issues that we have to.
Can I just really quickly put a thing, like, quick sort of, um, close out public comment at seven forty-five and then we can, can continue.
Okay.
Um, motion to close out public comment.
I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
Um, favor that.
I, I.
Okay, go ahead.
So, let's just, sorry, my brain works faster than my mouth, so, why don't we table this? We set our goals where we measure the monetary value of our, of our request in the MOU to what we're supposed to provide in-kind. See if they're equal and then work with Tim and Colleen to be like, hey, like you said, no one wants to give up their classroom, no one wants to give up their space.
I don't need.
But how do we, okay, so if they do get free range, what are their boundaries, what are their expectations? You know, I get that some of these kids that are watching these kids, I call them kid, I'm only a kid in my thirties, but they're, they're not as strict, but it's like. Let's do the Barney cleanup song, let's clean this stuff up, like, there should be expectations and consequences to those expectations.
Right.
So maybe we come back in August, is that fair for the MOU or is that way too late?
I believe we're supposed to have it signed, but.
Well, by June thirtieth, right?
And what, what we.
I mean, that's what, well, why don't we just say that right now what the expectations are?
So I. Yeah. If you don't follow them, then there's, there's your consequences.
So, so maybe the board can direct administration to develop those expectations and then, and then.
Yes.
Deliver those expectations to, to SaaS and then invoke the, something along those lines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do about the teachers giving up their rooms? Are we gonna not expect that to happen anymore, or are we going to?
Well, they're going to have to, but we're all gonna discipline them for not.
Rotating and, well, equitable way to do it.
Yeah.
Perfect.
That way, you know, one grade level doesn't always feel like, well, you know, you're taking a hard stage.
Right, um, yeah, we can move that to expression to Colleen.
But at any point, I think if a teacher says, I have six kids in my classroom that I want to stay after school with. At least we talk to the administration.
Well, they would take, they should move immediately, yeah.
And that should, and that hasn't been happening, I know for a fact that there was staff last year that could not stay after the extra help, cuz their class was utilized. They asked for it to be moved at state, so they were like, stop.
Well, good thing we have a new administration, so we'll be able to, um, follow parameters.
Right, yes, we do. Put things in better perspective and still keep it.
So how, right, so how should I word this nomination?
Let's say, accept the MOU, um, with, um, with the expectation that administration sets guidelines. Um, that SaaS works under with, um, capabilities. Please correct, please.
Did you, help me?
I'm looking, I, I'm, I'm about half there, you can definitely ask her.
To be, to be clear, to be clear on what is expected as far as the condition of the classrooms and respecting the teachers' classrooms. And then any information, anything that is.
To respect the rules in place?
Around the, oh, that they have implementation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The rules, the rules put in place by administration?
Yes. Thank you, so I'll make that motion.
And then if it doesn't happen, there'll be consequences.
All right, so let me, let me read it back when you're ready.
You'll mention that, right?
That's in the MOU.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Yes, she's got it.
All right, motion to accept the MOU with the expectation that the administration set guidelines and SaaS works to respect the rules put in place by the administration.
Yes.
Well, not just SaaS, I think SaaS and all nonprofits.
Yes. Well, this is, but this is just for SaaS.
This is just for SaaS, yeah. All right, so Lacey, you made the motion?
Yes.
And who, second?
Kelly.
Kelly, and a vote?
I.
I figure I.
Okay.
Yay, that's.
One more, do we have one more thing?
What else?
Is there one?
I don't think, it's a, Meredith mentioned a manifest hardship, that, that's a hearing, so I can.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay.
That has to be separate.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I have a call.
Okay, before we do that, before we do that, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Favor.
Oh, sorry.
Hold on, all right, who made the motion to adjourn, um.
Jen, eh, always.
Seven fifty?
Yes.
Yep.
And then Kelly.
Jen, Kelly, and vote?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you.
Did you wanna take?
Yeah, we gotta try.
Yeah, I guess someone, Maria's here and.
Yeah, you can give them.